Longer than I have, but to my knowledge, we've never had a teacher forty-two and a half years. And so before, and so I know this is kind of what we don't do. We usually just do the consent, but I think we owe it to Mr. Morgan. So Jim, if you want to come forward and say a few things, and Mr. Foot might even share a few things, so.
Well, I'll talk till I start to cry. What a fitting that Jim Foot sits here. Because when I came here, he was one of my students. And just simply, we had some good years and we had some great years. I've enjoyed my time here, obviously. It doesn't come easy to make this decision, but we do feel it's time to pass this torch and move on. Certainly thank everyone over the years, whether it be administrators, the interview parents, parents especially. I mentioned in my letter that that's one of the amazing things for me was parents who would encourage their students to take my class. And amazing the number that did that. I can see a couple sitting here. And that's probably the most amazing thing to me is that somebody would would want their student to take my class. And then I, and then in the letter I addressed non-ag, ag students, it didn't matter, that went on in life, did some great things. And I think of friend and you know, and they get an email once in a while or texts saying, you know, thank you. And that's, that's really special. So thank you all very much. You know, the search will begin. Wish everybody success on that.
Jim, Jim, I just wanted to say, Jim, Mr. Morgan, he showed up there the, that spring semester of my sophomore year over Christmas break. He was my fifth ag teacher. And he was, he was, he's going to be here forty-two and a half years. So he, he, he took the Lewisburg FFA program following those pretty hard times. We had, we had an ag teacher and he had some health problems and we couldn't find anybody. And Mr. Morgan, he, he came in our charge. And I mean, he, he took the bull by the horns and he made this program be not only one of the best in the state, but in the entire nation.
Okay. We have a motion for the consent agenda.
Moved to approve the December ninth Board of Education.
I second it.
We moved and seconded to approve the December ninth twenty twenty-four Board of Education Consent Agenda. There's any further discussion?
But.
Yes.
Boz.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
And Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman. Yes. Motion passed.
Okay, patron input. All right, before we start, read this statement. The board appreciates patrons, patrons taking time to to talk to us about policies and procedures. We set aside this time to hear from the public. This is not an appropriate time or place for persons to make positive or negative comments that would violate the privacy rights of district students or staff members. Persons making such comments which violate student or staff privacy rights will be asked to terminate their, their remarks. If a person, excuse me, a person has a complaint, the board will refer that person to the appropriate staff member or complaint procedure for follow-up. Thanks again for taking your time to discuss district business with the board. And the first one, Sarah Simmons.
All right. Hello. Thank you for letting us be here. Thank you guys for being here. Appreciate you guys doing what you do. I'm going to read a letter. And it's from a mother in our school district. It's a mother whose children go to Broadmoor. And it's anonymous because good evening. I couldn't be here in person. I wanted to express my gratitude to the Lewisburg School District, to Broadmore Elementary School and Principal Cindy Apple particularly, for the wonderful Ruby Bridges events the school held recently. It is so important for us to teach our children applicable lessons from our recent American history. And to have been lucky enough to hear the real Ruby Bridges speak, wow, it was such an experience for our children. When you're in elementary school, age forty-ish, seems really old. Most people in this room would likely argue that it's not that old. I do remember being so sleepy on the long bus ride to and from my school in a different area when I lived in the American South. I was a part of the continued attempt to integrate schools in the early eighties. It wasn't that long ago. And yes, that was not in Lewisburg, Kansas. However, it was in Lewisburg that my child was called the N-word. Thankfully, the school handled the situation well at the time. And I only mention it now to let people know that while we are a good community with good people in it, we are not infallible. We are not far time-wise or psychologically from the days of Ruby Bridges. Let's keep learning and getting better. Go Wildcats. And that was from again a mother. And thank you.
Thank you. Back, come on up. All right, next is Marie Winnedman. I hope I didn't. Wydeman.
Okay, I am a parent of a middle schooler and a child at Broadmore. I'm actually here on behalf of a friend who wanted to get her opinion out there to you guys, but was afraid to do it publicly for backlash for her children. Two times two equals four, mathematical fact. Ninety-nine percent of the DNA of each person is the same, scientific fact. There are seven continents, geographical fact. The United States of America allowed the enslavements of human beings up until the passage of the thirteenth amendment in eighteen sixty-five, historic fact. Educators are tasked with teaching our children from kindergarten through senior year in various subjects. And for that, there are unsung heroes. Teachers know from experience that some subjects are tougher than others to teach. Some math lessons are fun, some are not. Some spelling tests are easier than others. Some historical, historical facts less pleasant than others to discuss. Does that mean that those lesson in facts are tougher, more difficult, more nuanced, should be abandoned from the curriculum? If my child is having trouble grasping the periodic table in high school chemistry, I fully expect for the lesson to still be taught and quizzed upon. If my country had laws in place throughout history that were unjust and unpleasant to think about, I fully expect the lesson to be taught and quizzed upon. History is a subject just as biology, English and math. Over time, we advanced in fields such as medicine and technology because we pushed ourselves to learn from the past, question mythology, theorize, retest, discuss and learn, so the same mistakes are not repeated in both the laboratory and society. All this to say, it was my utmost disappointment to learn that the district decided to omit an activity plan for Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day at Broadmore Elementary. The day's events were clearly stated well in advance and every family had the ability to opt-out. Ruby Bridges showed immense bravery and courage as a child during the civil rights movement, and she is still very much alive to recount her experience firsthand. Are the circumstances that led to the segregation awful and horrendous? Yes. Were there white-only schools, pools, churches and sporting events, to name a few? Yes. Should this history be taught? Yes. I would argue more so now than ever that our children can learn how to treat their classmates with respect and dignity. You see, some would like to say our children are too young to be exposed to such unpleasant trees, but I'm here to share that our children are very much acting out in ways similar to those people that threw Rachel slurs at six-year-old walking to her kindergarten class escorted by federal marshals. Yes, right here in Lewisburg. In late September of this school year, I picked up my third grader who was not his typical boisterous, talkative self. I immediately knew something was wrong, but he was not going to talk about it. And we rode in silence all the way home. I've never seen my son so troubled and thought to myself, perhaps he got into a physical game of football in the playground and was now in trouble with the principal. Oh, how I wish that had been something so benign. You see, by the time we reached our front door, he broke down in tears. I had to calm him down, not knowing what had yet occurred. Finally, he was able to tell me through his tears that a fellow student had told him to go back to his own country. I immediately felt so many emotions. I felt as if someone had punched me in the stomach. I felt ill. I felt immense sadness and then rage. You see, my son's country of birth is the United States. Both his father and my own birth certificate, certificates were issued right here in Kansas City, Kansas. His grandparents were born in the U.S., as were his great-grandparents. To which country should he return to? Was he told this because he has a different last name, because his mom is Mexican-American and therefore he is as well? No matter the reason, this was wrong. No matter if his country of birth was U.S.A. or not, this is wrong. In my reflection, I realized in my forty-five years on this planet, never had anyone said such hateful words to my face. I guess I now know how lucky I am, but now we're faced with the ugly, painful task of trying to explain by a classmate would say such a thing. To the school's credit, my son's classroom teacher, principal and parent tackled the situation head-on with grace and sea impact. I was even able to open up a productive dialogue with the other child's parents. As it turned out, he too was a victim as he heard this hateful phrase in a video game chatroom. He was unsure of what the words meant, but as children do, children do, he repeated it. Not only our families, but others throughout the district, lacking in the benefit from this lesson from history. Unfortunately, we are not alone in our experiences. Shortly thereafter, my son shared that a classmate had been called a Rachel slur and he was saddened all over again. In fact, he has said if this occurs again, he wants to change schools, school districts. This pains me as we all consider it as parents. However, we know full well that you cannot walk away from hatred in all instances. The current rhetoric in our society is one of division and it is my hope that Lewisburg unifies the school district will be a voice of inclusivity and will continue teaching all subjects, no matter how difficult. As all families can learn from the past to influence our future. A concerned parent of USD four one six.
Thank you. Nikki Mossinghoff.
It's a pretty good teachers.
Well, most of the time people get it all. Okay, I was asked to come read a letter from a parent regarding the same situation. To whom it may concern, my family and I have lived in Lewisburg for a handful of years and we have enjoyed this small town. The school district has, for the most part, been great and accommodating and friendly. However, recently, a bit happened that made my family beyond disappointed in the school district and their failure to support the minority families in this town. As a family who isn't minority, we have faced endless racism in this town and school system. Racist comments have been made to my children on numerous occasions. As parents, my spouse and myself have made sure to teach our children to be non-confrontational and to accept everyone regardless of their skin color, religious beliefs and background. Numerous times, my children have been the brunt of racial slurs, ignorant comments and hateful behavior, all because of their skin color. And every time, my children have endured, walked away and been passive about these attacks for fear of being on the retaliation end of behavior was reported to teachers or administration. As I write this letter anonymously, I do so in an effort to make sure my children aren't treated differently or affected by my speaking out. On November fourteenth, the school district had planned to honor Ruby Bridges. This gesture was beyond moving. For all of this, where all of it stood for in regards to Ruby Bridges and for the educating it would have given to the people of Lewisburg. As people of color, the school honoring this important historical event was very touching. My spouse and myself were hopeful that maybe this would open the eyes of the people in this town to how difficult racism is and how it is still very much alive. When we heard about the complaints about the event and how the school board chose to listen to few people who complained, even though there was an opt-out option, we were greatly saddened. What was going to be taught was a real-life historical event, not critical race theory, not a fictional character, a true event that happened to a woman who is still alive. We were so disappointed that rather than support the minorities in this town and to help end racism, what the school district chose to listen to a few white people who claimed to not be racist, but were screaming about how horrible it was for the school to honor Ruby. To the people who live here and claim Lewisburg isn't racist, I'm sorry, but the actions that were against the events of that day just showed how far this town has to go and that breaks my heart. Don't forget, those who forget history are doomed to repeat it. I urge the school board to really think about what message they want to convey to people in this town. And you are, that you are inclusive and want to stick it up for the little guy. Or are you the type that cave and do exactly what the bullies want? Thank you.
Amanda, and I'm, I can't, I'm I'm, obviously not Amanda.
Hi, my name is Awadu Endoy. I have three kids in the, in USD four sixteen anyway, so. One goes to middle school. The other two, they go to Broadmore. But just like they've been talking about, I hear a lot of racism from especially like my middle schoolers. They have like nieces and nephews. Sometimes some of these kids don't even want to go to school because of being called out there. Like, you know, the way that other kids just interact with them or talk to them or call them names or whatever. And I have like one question, it is, which is like, you know, what are we going to do about it? What's the policy over here? Because I know that my kids, I teach them to stand up for themselves. I don't do bullies. Doesn't mean that they're going to get in trouble. They're going to get suspended. It's all right. I'll be fine with that as long as they stand up for themselves because I know for a fact that my kid been bullied and they reacted. And he was all good and taken care of. But guess what? The next kid didn't bully him. So what are we going to do over here? Are we just going to have like policies that, you know, kid is going to be racist, call somebody names and bully them and then we just write a letter, apology and just let it go? I mean, like, what are we going to do? Because the way that we're going to act with this, this problem, this crisis is that if you bully me and I let go, somebody else bullied me and I let go, it's going to get on to me at some point in time. That I won't even be able to do a job. We'll have to strike a deal. I'll just let you do whatever you want to do. Because I'm so used to being okay, being down. So my main question and my main comments over here is like, what real policy the school district is going to take against this thing? Because you have like wonderful kids, very smart kids, all A students. All my three kids, they're all A students. But when they get up and some of them don't want to go to school because there's like a kid out there that calls that name, I have a problem with that. So what's, what is, what are, what are we going to do about it? I'm just going to make these kids write apology letters? And then, you know, it's all good. And then my kid has to live with that and tomorrow another kid is going to do it? I mean, like, what's the solution over here? Because I already told you guys, I teach my kids to stand up for themselves. Bullying, racism, they ain't going to take it. I mean, it's just going to be violent out there. And that's the only time that I tell them like, you know what? You take care of yourself and you stand up for yourself. Any other time, you can let it go. Because I know it starts it all back. The first time that somebody does it to them and they stand up for themselves, that's it. So that was my comments or whatever. You guys more advice, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Mascadelli.
Let me know in my time, Charles. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Lauren Mascadelli. I'm a parent of two children at Broadmore Elementary and a member of the Broadmore Elementary Site Council. First, I want to start by clearly expressing the intent behind speaking today. As a site council member, I had the opportunity to witness and understand the purpose and planning behind the Ruby Bridges event. This event was developed in response to feedback from teachers and administrators who noted, noted instances of racial slurs and verbal abuse directed at minority students happening at Broadmore. I saw this entire event as an opportunity to provide meaningful learning experiences that promote understanding, inclusion and community growth. Mr. Foot, I'd like to take a moment to thank you for responding to my questions and providing context regarding the decision. I appreciate the effort to explain the reasoning behind the changes and to address my concerns thoughtfully. While my formal request to place on the agenda for discussion this evening was not approved, I hope you and your fellow members of the board will still consider discussing and reviewing the policies, procedures and decision-making process to identify and address potential gaps for the future. On behalf of time today, I can only address a few issues I stated, but I ask that my original presentation request be shared with the rest of the board if not done so already. And I welcome any and all to contact me if they have any desire to have any conversation regarding any of the issues I presented. In Mr. Foot's response, you noted that the decision to modify the Ruby Bridges event stemmed in part from protocols not being followed at the building level. While I understand the complexity of the decision-making process and respect the need for swift action, I would like to ask for clarification on a few points to prevent issues like this in the future. Specifically, are there specific protocols for event planning that committees like Site Council should follow to assure alignment with board policies when discussing events like this? What is the role that board representatives serve on Site Council committees? Are they expected to communicate feedback or concerns to the board or superintendent? These questions come from a genuine desire to improve the planning process. I believe that clear expectations and earlier reviews of Site Council plans could prevent last-minute conflicts or changes and help us collaborate more effectively. I'd also like the board to consider clarifying the role of board representatives on Site Council. Their presence could imply a connection to board policies and it would be helpful to know if they're expected to provide feedback or raise concerns on behalf of the board during the planning and discussing process. Lastly, I appreciate the board's commitment to review policies, address gaps and initiate a self-evaluation in January, as Mr. Foot mentioned in his letter. These steps reflect the leadership and accountability we all, we want, all want for our schools. And I know Mr. Foot mentioned, and I have spoken with a few of you, and it has been mentioned as well that all members of the board have grown up in this community in Lewisburg. Something that I think is fantastic and I appreciate a lot of the traditions that have been built in this community. While I didn't grow up in Lewisburg, my family has called this community home for years and I care deeply about its success. I hope you will consider an outsider's perspective that blends respect for those traditions with new ideas that benefit all of our students. My goal is to foster collaboration, communication and trust, both within our schools and in the broader, broader community. I appreciate the chance to work together to build a stronger and more inclusive community.
I have a prepared statement I want to read. You'll have to bear with me because I've been fighting a cold. Early on the morning of Wednesday, November thirteenth, I received a text message from a patron and several phone calls from Board of Education members concerning the Ruby Bridges event that was planned for the following day at Broadmore Elementary. I was traveling that day, but was able to reach Dr. Bearman on the phone. He had been made aware of the entire scope of the planned events that morning by a board member. We discussed the planned event over the phone and were both surprised at the amount of instructional time that was being taken away from the day. Initially, we, initially, we were told that Broadmore would be participating in a livestream of the Ruby Bridges event in Topeka. We were excited for our students to be able to participate in this event. Board members Boz and Smith had witnessed her presentation at an event earlier in the year and came away very impressed. There were some concern about the age appropriateness of the Ruby Bridges movie, but the bigger concern was the addition of the solemn march around the school campus. There was also an issue with the original opt-out form because it only included the movie. I talked with a few people who had seen the movie and received mixed results. I told Dr. Bearman, excuse me, that I would watch the movie when I arrived on that evening. We both agreed that the solemn march did not provide an educational element to the day. Could violate the equal access law and could be construed as promoting activism. In fact, the Ruby Bridges Foundation website states that the march is a form of activism on their front page and promotes further calls to activism. I told Dr. Bearman that I thought the solemn march around campus should be canceled. We agreed that the march to school could proceed because it was voluntary and initiated off-campus. The movie would proceed at that time and that the viewing of the Ruby, excuse me, the Ruby Bridge of the event in Topeka should proceed as planned. I returned home around midnight that night, purchased the movie and watched it in its entirety. I came away very impressed with the message that was conveyed. I was concerned with some of the racial slurs that were prominent in parts of the movie, but I, but felt confident that the message overshadowed the few scenes that included those slurs. I also knew that we had an opt-out form in place and called Dr. Bearman early that morning and let him know that I had no issues with the day proceeding as currently planned. Although we had received some complaints about the day's planned proceedings, we had not received a formal complaint. The opt-out form was in place and the events that were scheduled to take place on campus were educational and aligned with our curriculum. I would like to be clear that all the day's plans of it, planned events took place except for the planned solemn march around campus. I received numerous positive messages from parents about the presentation in the movie. I was told by one parent that Ruby's message wasn't about race at all, but rather a message about right versus wrong, good versus evil, and her message could and should apply to many historical events. As your elected Board of Education, we take the education of our students very seriously. We want our students to receive the best education possible and one that aligns with the majority of our community. We also support our teachers, staff and administration, but sometimes we have to step in and make sure policies and established protocols are followed. As a board, we don't always agree on every decision and we shouldn't. That's what makes we're an effective board. Sometimes we must compromise, though, to make, to make things work for our students, teachers, staff, parents and the community. I take my responsibility as the board president very seriously. Sometimes I must make hard decisions, but I know at the end of the day that I will have the board's support in those decisions, decisions, or they wouldn't have placed me in this position. It is my hope that the Lewisburg community can take the message from the end of the Ruby Bridges movie and come to, come together to support each other.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It seems that we have two issues that are related to each other. One is what happened with the Ruby Bridge Day. The other is we have parents here and people that are speaking on behalf of parents that say that their children are not being treated well, mildly. And so I don't, you know, can't let that stand.
No, absolutely not.
Needs to be welcomed in Lewisburg. It's bullying. And I don't want people to leave here today thinking that we didn't hear them and that we're not going to do anything about it and that this is the end of it.
No.
I have, this has to be a front and center issue that the school board takes care of and you know, you know, if you hear something, say something, you know, contact the principal. We do need to look at, you know, understand their policies better. But whatever we got to do to make this right, make people feel welcome, we need to do it.
I agree. I mean, we're, we're constantly looking at policy and adjusting policy as different events happen. I mean, we'll, we'll learn from this and we'll move forward, obviously. And we'll look at our policy and see what we need to do to have better policy.
I know I had my time to speak, but I just kind of wanted to make a quick statement. I won't read my letter. But I think a big part of the issue in this town and the issue that most of the parents had with Ruby Bridges Day as a whole, not just the march, was the topic of CRT. I personally took it upon myself to get the history books from grades three through eight and read through all of them. CRT is not at Broadmore Elementary at the very least. And I think that as a community and as school board members, it's important to take the opportunity to tell parents when they complain about CRT or when people are running for school district and using an opportunity to, you know, keep CRT out of our school or let's get it out of our schools. It's not here. And people keep complaining about it. And when it comes down to it, if we just told those parents, hey, CRT is not in our school district, why don't you check out the history books and read them? They would see that and they would stop complaining about things that would have made a positive difference in our communities.
We as a board know that CRT is not taught in our schools.
I get that, but I think that
Right. I, I understand. And there was an overreaction to the event and through, initially from the, from the community. We did not, we, we did not let a motion in to our decision-making. We just, we made all our decisions based on policy and protocol. Everything, everything that was planned happened except for the solemn march because
You still think it sent a message to the minorities in this
Well, that's, that That, that may be, but it proper, proper That may be, but if proper protocols had been followed, we wouldn't have got to that part.
If proper protocols would have been followed, I think everybody would have had to have made a formal complaint with their name and address.
Right. The problem, though, is-
And complaining to them the chain of command.
If a formal complaint was filed, the whole event would have been canceled because we would have had to investigate it and we didn't want that. So... Again, sometimes we have to compromise.
Another member of Broadmore Site Council, we have been discussing-
Can you come up?
We discussed in a meeting prior, like the week prior, that there is an issue with inclusivity and diversity in the schools and we have been asked as a Site Council Board to work on that in the schools. Going forward, do we need to have our plans approved by the Board before-
Well, at the very least, it needs to go to Dr. Bearman so he can talk to the Board about it. Because, Dr. Bearman, when things happen that when we don't follow proper protocols, it comes back on Dr. Bearman, it comes back on us. So if they're followed correctly, then we can avoid these situations.
So having it discussed with a Board member in the Site Council meeting isn't-
No.
I'm not trying, no, you're fine. I can't, one, not one of us can speak for the entire Board.
Right.
And we can't, you know, I can't say, yes, we can do something or no, we cannot do something because it takes four of us agreeing on something to act, to make action, you know, on something.
Sure. So going forward, like on Martin Luther King Day, if we decide to do any type of planning around that event, do we need to go to Dr. Bearman first and get back there?
Yeah. I mean, he's our Superintendent. That's pretty good.
Excuse me? All events that are being planned-
I mean, everything goes, there's a chain of command for everybody. So everything-
So line the communication.
And he would take it to Dr. Bearman and then Dr. Bearman, if there was any issues or questions, would come to the Board.
Dr. Bearman knows our policies and protocols. If I have a question, I call him. So he would know if something wasn't being followed. And so he needs to know, you know, what's going on.
And that's the way it's been in the past?
Yes.
Well, I'll give another example. Glow Bash was probably planned at Site Council and obviously Mrs. Apple shared events of Glow Bash. So obviously, a great community event. Nothing, you know, different than this topic, but a great event. So that was planned with staff, admin, Site Council presented to me and it's been approved and we've been running the Glow Bash successfully now for what, four or five years? So that would just be one example that was done at Site Council, but presented to me, making sure facilities, safety, everything was met on that.
The Board completely understands that the excitement that this event held and, you know, but sometimes you have to step back and think, okay, are we doing everything according to policies and protocols? And sometimes that doesn't happen and that's when we run off the rails. We want all history to be taught in school, good and bad. So we have nothing against any of that. Excuse me?
Africans are uneducated?
Excuse me?
Africans are uneducated?
Who said that?
The history teacher.
No, I-
They're not as educated as us Americans.
That's probably an issue that needs to be taken to the principal of that school.
Do you have some, if we're kind of opening for discussion, I do have some questions.
Well, I answered a few, but really, it's not our policy to do this. So I just assume not get into this. That's why I didn't approve your request.
Is there another opportunity to open up discussion with members of the community that might have additional questions? I think that's the part where I struggled and-
We as a Board can discuss that, you know, and possibly have something in the future.
Yeah. I think I have some questions too, just concerning the guidelines regarding what, you know, in terms of activism. Activism can take many different forms. There can be environmental activism and there can be, you know, agricultural activism. Like activism as a statement itself is a hard thing to just say, we're avoiding activism. It can be interpreted in many different ways.
I understand.
So understanding or having clear policy as a Site Council member to plan accordingly and prevent issues like this would be extremely helpful to know what elements of our concern and-
Sure. We don't want our kids not to be engaged in the community. We just, we just need to follow our policies and our protocols is all we're saying. Okay? All right. Move along here. 4.0 discussion, 4.1 teaching and learning presentation.
Several shout-outs. So one, if you haven't heard, the biggest shout-out was Jim Morgan because he replicated. That's amazing. But Jared Worthington was chosen as the Lewisburg Citizen of the Year, so... Definitely all Wildcat, all Lewisburg, you know. Maybe he needs to calm down a little bit on the microphone at the football game, but yeah.
Lower speakers.
Yeah. Yeah, we were just up there making sure they weren't blowing. But, you know, great, great guy and just a shout-out to Jared. You can always see him and he's always cheering everyone on. So just a great guy. Been here 20 years, a graduate of here, and so just fell in place as he graduated from Emporia. We had a math job opening and so outside of going to Emporia State, he's been a Wildcat his entire career. So that's awesome. Another Ashton Moore, obviously a great senior, just does so many great things for us. I mean, just not on the football field or now wrestling. I mean, he in the classroom, he'll be in the musical. He sings, probably because his mom tells him to, but he was just, he didn't know, he just received the Bobby Bell Award. Of course, Bobby Bell played for the Chiefs for 12 years, a Hall of Famer. Bobby Bell, I think he's 84, is still living and so to win that award is amazing. That is an entire metro Kansas and Missouri side. So Ashton is a great kid. Of course, going to K-State and gonna do great things there. So Ashton, like I said, is just an all-around awesome kid. He's, yeah, some of you maybe just see him, number 21 carrying the ball, but when you get to know him, like our teaching staff or I get to, he's just an awesome kid. So I just wanted to shout, give him a shout-out as well. And next, Denise Mosby's here. And the Board, you guys have a copy of some highlights she's gonna share. Denise is our Food Service Director for OPA. Denise has just been awesome from day one. She came in and anytime you change, obviously, something like that, there's gonna be angst, there's gonna be concerns, staffing changes. But this year's just been awesome. I know as I meet with the principals, they share that participation's up. They changed the food menus this year. And so I think our lunch program is awesome. But Denise, whatever you want to share, they do have that two-page document that you have.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a few minutes and drop in and give you a few highlights for this full year so far. Our staff, we had almost minus two, 100% of our staff return this year. So I feel like we have really good teams, you know, in all of our schools, you know. Everyone's come back, but too, they had health concerns. So we really, you know, turnover compared to year one is significantly down. November, we had our Thanksgiving feast. We did our senior Thanksgiving dinner. We have, every year, I think we've done it, we've had almost 300 for the senior Thanksgiving. And culinary students have been a big help. We know what's happening in serving. We enjoy having them in the kitchen. Lewisburg has been selected to be a certified training district with OPA. So what that means is that they hire new kitchen managers or directors. They'll send them, like in the North Kansas area, to Lewisburg to see what we're doing, what we're doing well. And just let's spend a week or two with either myself or one or the other. The high school will be the location that is certified and that will be complete before we go on winter break. We're excited about that. Phyllis, who's our district kitchen manager at high school, and Stacy Williams, who's an OPA kitchen manager, they were selected to be in the C program for OPA, which is skill enhancement and employee development. This is a big, big kudos to them. They've completed seven ICN classes, the Institute of Child Nutrition. Plus, by the time they leave for winter break, they will have done 12 hours of classes and so they'll graduate from that program. So we'll move a couple more into that program as they develop as leaders. So, you know, great. I mean, they're really taking all that in and learning a lot in that program. I completed mine in May of last year. Paige McClure, who's our kitchen manager at Rockville, she was nominated and chosen for the Open Employee Spotlight last week. So she was on OPA's Facebook page. Next Board Letter, I'll do all the links for the Open North, which is where I post a lot of self-pictures and, you know, food and different things we're doing. And OPA, as a food management company, has their own Facebook page. So encourage you to look at it and enjoy it if you'd like, just to see what we're up to. So this full year so far, we've done over 19,000 breakfasts, over 63,000 lunches, and parlor carts on there. And there's a few pictures on the front page, some different things that we've been doing. The initial school lunch, we got a video, but we have a little technical difficulties. But if there's ever anything I can do, please reach out. My contact information's on there and that's all we have.
Expanded options this year, even all the way down to Rockville, which is a little tricky. I see Lisa Reese back there, so I guess. If I get to Rockville in the morning when they're doing lunch count, you know, if you picture a five or six-year-old and so like Mrs. Reese is asking them, do they want this? You know, you might think a lot of options is good, but now picture you're a teacher with 25-year-olds and you're saying, do you want chicken nuggets, cheese pizza, macaroni? Don't just use those examples. She has to explain that and go over that 20 different times. Because Sally said that, then comes Johnny and Johnny's like, well, what was option B? And so we work through those.
Yeah. Paige is gonna check some pictures out now so that they can see what's gonna be on the menu to kind of hold out that process.
The middle school, high school, and all of them, if you stop by at the presentation, they take a lot of pride in not only what they cook, but how it looks. Because obviously, kids want it to look good and taste good both and so. But her kitchen managers, and as it shows there, and we still have, when we have an opening, they have the choice. They can work for us. And so as it says there, the high school kitchen manager is still a 416 employee or they can work for OPA. So they just look at everything, from salaries to benefits, of course, work for us. You get into capers, theirs would be a 401K world. They look at health insurance options. So we allow that either way to be open to employees when we are hiring.
And the programs that we do, you know, we welcome, you know, district employees like Phyllis, you know, nominated to be a part of, you know, expanding her knowledge and learning leadership skills.
They do cater in the Supreme Court, for example. Denise cooked for the Supreme Court justices when they were here and throughout the year of our teams, parent-teacher conferences, PD events, professional development days, she'll go and do that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last little highlight is teammates. We've been having teammates in our school district for roughly five years. As a reminder, Tom Osborne, the legendary coach in Nebraska, when he was at University of Nebraska, he brought in, just like all the college coaches, brought in student athletes from all over the country, the world. And they were there to play football, but he also wanted them to get back to the community of Lincoln, Nebraska. And so he started teammates program with his football boys. And then it's just, obviously, Mr. Osborne's been retired for quite some time and that expanded all over Nebraska and now it's into Kansas. We started in 2019 with our program. Sarah McIntyre hit the ground running with it. She's been to the national conferences. We started at Broadmore. And so I started with my mentee and now he's in high school. And so it's gonna be exciting for me personally as a mentor and Mr. Tappin has an older mentee as well to see them through. So we're five years into it. So it'll be a couple more years before our first teammates are graduating. Miss Kreiser's a teammate. And so Sarah, obviously, was the biggest catalyst as we've brought in new staff at the other buildings. So at the middle school, Sarah Alexander, our counselor now, is taking lead. Sarah's mentored her. Mr. Pickman and Eliza Maloney at the high school. In fact, they just had a conference at Green Bush the other day as well. So we were selected to have a professional video group come out and highlight not just Lewisburg, but this is their PSA that'll be on their website as well. So this is, it works. Oh, man, I got it all pumped up. And as you're doing that, Sarah, do you want to say anything or anyone else on this side about teammates? Miss Kreiser, since you're a teammate-
We need people to sign up. I know she has a list. We need mentors. We have 43 matches currently. We're the largest program in Kansas. We need, we always can have more matches. In the last month, I've made four new matches. I just don't have any more mentors. So I encourage you to tell people. All you have to do is be willing to show up, listen, not be an expert at anything other than being kind and caring and showing up. So please contact me with a sweet name of mentors.
And usually struggle more on the guy's side, right?
Actually, not true.
Oh, not true, then?
Not true.
Okay. So while the video's not working, maybe we can get it running. Because it is a really awesome video. Beth Dixon's in it and sent all of our mentees and Mr. Tappin's in it. So maybe one quick... But we will try to find it. Okay? And it is excellent video. I'll send it out to the Board and we'll get it on our website as well.
Okay. 4.2, Board of Education Method of Voting and Election Method.
Okay, I was asked to share how all school districts in Kansas do their, how school boards are selected, the voting methods. And so KSB has this information. And so there are 286 school districts in Kansas. Next year, there'll be 285, a small district out in Western Kansas called Healy is closing. And so this still has little Healy on there. The only district you see right there, Fort Leavenworth on the fort, they do theirs differently. So if you want to see how Paola or Shawnee Mission, you name it, they're on here. And there's three silos there. You have the school districts. They're all in USD order. And then you have the voting plan. There's four voting plans and then there's three methods. And then Jenny, if you go to the very bottom of this, I kind of synthesized what 286 districts in the communities have chosen what voting method, voting plan and method. So right here, so if you go up a little bit, so there's the four methods of elections that Boards and communities across Kansas can choose. So number one, two-member districts with three Board members in each district, one member at large. Second one, three-member districts with two Board members in each district and one at large. You can have ours. Three is six-member districts with one Board member in each district and one at large. Or you can have seven at-large Board members. And then you have the three voting plans, where voters vote for all candidates in both the general and primary. That's A. You have voters vote for all positions in the general election. Voters only vote for candidates in their member district and primary. And then you have voters only vote for candidates in their member district in both the general and primary election. And then what I did is I took all 285 without Fort Leavenworth so the Board could see like where they're at, what's the most common. Common across the state is 4A, which is at-large. Every Board member is at-large. 119 of the 285 districts is, they're all at-large. They're 4A. The second is 2B with 59. So that is three-member districts with two Board members in each district and one at large. And then the voting plan is the voters vote for all positions in general. Voters only vote for candidates in their member district. voters only vote for candidates in their member district. We have, it's kind of hard to see in the purple, uh tw- there's twenty districts, so nineteen others uh have ours across the state of Kansas. The six-member districts with one board member in each district and one at large, and then we're, the C is how our board members are elected. Also in the packet is all the state statutes. If the board chooses to make any change, uh what we would go through. Uh, click notes on that. Uh, it does take the the popular vote, so the board would have to have an election. You could have a special election. You could put on a primary election, or you could put on a general election. Uh, and all the statutes that are shared in the packet uh go through that. So, if the board would want to entertain uh changing, currently we're four C, and you can see all the other options. No one has four B. Uh, then uh we would decide that, obviously, I'd have to get with our attorneys and probably Janet White's office, or, and make sure we're doing it the correct way. But if the board is interested in it, there is a mechanism to do that, but it does have to go to a public vote as well, so.
What do what, some surrounding districts do? Did you put them in Paola?
Uh, just, well, so I can do.
I guess it's not. Paola has three, three districts, two in each, but everybody votes for.
Everybody.
So, Osawatomie and Paola are the same. They're both three A. Uh, those would be two. Spring Hill, USD two thirty. Uh, Spring Hill is two A. So, those are just, uh, Blue Valley, they're two twenty-nine. So, Blue Valley, uh, they are three B. Three B, the six-member districts. So, they're, so we're three C, Blue Valley is three B. So, their only difference, voters vote on all positions in the general, but voters only vote for candidates in their member district and primary.
Interesting.
Yeah, that's. Blue Valley does.
Only the primary versus.
The reason I brought it up was there always seems to be, every year where there's, when there's election for school boards, you know, not everybody gets to vote. I mean, unless that's positioned up, then that's the at-large. My idea was, if you, if we went to three, and then you had two in each of those three districts, then you're have, and they're alternating, and you're always having somebody in that district that's up for election. So, say if Rob and I's district was combined, Rob just got elected, mine would be the next one, and then it'd be back to Rob's, same like if Lanny and you were in the same one. And then, the other thing that I've always heard is people like to have, you know, my board member, that's, that's my board member. So, we'll actually, they'd have two, but I mean, my, my, my preference would be to have three districts, one at-large, you have two that are alternating in each district, and then you only vote for the people that's in your district. That would be my preference, because.
Can we go back down to the As and Bs? And then we took and looked at that.
Then you have a little bit of ownership in here.
So, I believe so.
Just what it is.
So, Jim would be thinking, uh, method number two, three-member districts with two board members in each district.
And C.
And C, which we currently have, the voting plan being uh.
Several years ago, we, we talked about this, too. We didn't go forward, because what we talked to is, some of these districts are really small, and if you don't have anybody running, then you're kind of going to bind too. Well, and if you got, split them up toward the districts that are bigger, because they're pretty.
But they're all.
Unproportional.
Well, they have to be within five percent plus or minus, and that's our next conversation we have to.
That was part of the reason I talked about it, too, was if you, say, say, just for argument's sake, say if you had, put my district and Rob's together, well, then you've got twice as many people to run, you know, so you have, you're expanding, getting more good candidate.
Right.
And more likely to get somebody to run.
Right. But on number two, does that? So, say like Rob running, he wins the primary. Or do you take the top two from the primary to go into the general, and then it's just that district that votes on?
Well, I believe you have to be four to.
More than two.
More than two for.
So, there's a three.
Okay.
But it's not, those two or three would be voted on by the entire school district? Be three, see, we have to be in, if it was C, it's in your member district. So, just living in Rob.
The only one that would be, be at-large would be your, the one that you represent, which would be the entire district, which everybody would vote for.
Okay. Now, B allows you to do just primaries uh in your member district, and then whoever's on the ballot, everyone gets to vote for B, even if you don't live.
That's the way Paola does.
Even if you don't live in that district, you get a vote if they're vying for a seat. Osawatomie is, so, yeah, that's up there. Yeah, Paola is three A. Os- Osawatomie and Paola are both three.
Oh, yeah. They're, they're three, I thought they were two.
Right there, right, voting, yeah, three, three sixty.
I was wrong there.
Uh, right, that goes down there, Garnett. So, the next Garnett is three A as well. But I just keep that thought, because the next packet uh we have, and so, every uh, and this will be in uh your packet, but it's been updated, and Jenny has, and you have a paper copy in front of you, and Jenny will go through this as I do this. So, as you recall, uh, we went through this with RSP associates, associates out of Little Park, uh, after COVID, the, the twenty twenty census was delayed because of COVID. So, usually, uh, demographers can come in a year later, but with COVID, it was another year. The census, if you even recall, was delayed and everything. So, in twenty twenty-two, we received this information, because state statute, if you don't go all at-large, so all those other plans you have in front of you, the six-member districts, or the three-member districts, or the two-member districts have to be within five percent plus or minus of the mean of the district. And so, RSP came in, they have all of our, uh, they have, you know, they can look at county data, and uh they had shared with us two years ago that we were within the plus and minus. And so, if you go to, you see a yellow page, one going. So, right there. So.
Yeah. Oh, that's the one that presented.
So, this is the one they presented, and uh it was incorrect. And uh, I guess I should have caught it, they should have caught it, or someone, but we didn't. It wasn't until last week, when Mr. Foot asked me to look at the first documents I gave you, and I started looking at this, and I was a social studies teacher, not a math teacher, but I've also been in a lot of good uh classrooms around our district and realized that this was incorrect information. So, first column you see there, so our six districts, so it's everyone but Pat, obviously, let's scroll down a little bit more. So, we have nine thousand seven hundred and ten, uh, so that's how many people Pat represents. Districts one through six, that's how many you guys are representing, according to the twenty twenty census population.
Question.
Yeah.
Is that total population, or is that voting population?
Voting population, yeah, if you go back up. So, then the mean, the mean is the average. So, if you take what it shows there, those six districts, add that up, divide by six, you get sixteen eighteen. My math, that was, that was, I was going with that. Third column, I could follow that just like everyone in here could. All right, it's negative three forty-nine, because if you take sixteen eighteen minus twelve sixty-nine in District One, you get three forty-nine. Well, they presented the fourth column, which is what statute says we have to do. And when this was presented, we said, all right, all six districts are plus or minus five percent. But when I was doing this last week, I was like, no, those percentages are not right. Just that first one, twelve sixty-nine into sixteen eighteen, that's like twenty-two percent. And so, where they came up with that number, RSP, and we did pay them, they came down Friday afternoon, I was supposed to have a Zoom call with them, and they told me they were driving to it, so. I naturally knew something was probably, they were going to tell me something. Uh, but if you go to the next page, we're getting some firehouse uh back. Go down the next one. So, this is what they should have presented to us two years ago. You can see very different numbers. The closest to the mean is District Two, but even District Two was off at seven point nine. The district that was off the most was District Six at twenty-eight percent.
That'd be huge.
Yeah. It's the largest district.
Sure.
So, they have presented some options to get us back in compliance, but it's what I will have to know when I get through this presentation is, is where, because if the board doesn't want to do any of this, then obviously, we need to tackle this and get us in compliance. If the board says, yeah, let's look at this, study this, maybe get it on the ballot, however, I will still have to go to Janet White, maybe Scott Schwab's office at the State Department, and ask them, do we need to fix this right now, because we are not in compliance? Or if our board is studying to change the methods, you know, I don't know what to do, I'd have to get some guidance on that. But if the board says no to, we're good with our six, thanks for bringing this information, then right away, I'm tackling this, because we have to get this in compliance. So, they present, prevented, uh, presented two options, and they're in your packet, and Jenny, if you scroll down. So, here's scenario one, and what they do, and, and their computer, they know where everyone lives, they can just move the districts around, and then they can get us within those uh guided, or within that framework. So, if you go to the next map, and you guys feel free to rip that apart, so you can almost superimpose those, but if they change, they're still the same six colors, and if you see the little dots on there, that is where current board members live. So, you can see two forty-seventh, Rob lives on two forty-seventh to the left, right? So, there's where Rob lives. Uh, Joe Aaron is right on the side of orange, Jim's on Metcalf, oh, the next one up, next one up, up, yep. In the middle, blue.
No.
Right there, yeah.
I didn't see that one.
So, Sarai obviously is in South Metcalf, uh, and the only one, when Jennifer was elected, she was in District Six. She has moved, that's fine, as long as a board member stays within our hundred and fifty-six square miles, they can stay on. We've had board members, you know, recent Bruce Caldwell's an example, he moved out of state, that's why he had to resign as a board member. So, Jennifer is that dot right next to the cursor right there, so she's currently in Jim's uh district. So, this would be scenario one. If we do, if the board chooses to do scenario one, if you go to the next slide, you can see what it does to the percentages. It gets us, and I have done the math, and you can obviously see it's a lot closer, because we're not seeing negative three hundred and sixty-nine, we're seeing negative seventeen. District Four has the biggest negative, uh, negative fifty-seven. And then scenario two, they provide it, uh, and they kind of give an overview of what they've done there. Let you go down next one. You can see pro- the biggest one there is blue, uh, Lanny is purple, so Lanny takes more of Jim's. Jim's, even though blue is very small, almost as small as District Six, but there's a lot of population in there. And so, if the board would choose this scenario two, and go down, and you can see the percentages are even closer uh on this one. So, this one provides the closest, and then this would stay put until, you know, barring another, you know, thing we had to go through in twenty twenty, roughly twenty thirty-one, unless you're one of those a hundred and nineteen districts that go, so if you're a district that goes all at-large, you don't have to ever mess with this. But if you're, all those other districts, all those other options, you're required by law to go through this every ten years, which we did, we were provided the wrong information. And so, this is the correct information. Uh, so there's really two things, and then I'll be quiet and let you guys discuss. First is, the first part of it, do you guys want to entertain any of changing districts? And, and if so, how? Because if you want this done before the next election, then it probably would be a special election, which comes at a cost. Or because if you just put it on the next primary or the general, some of you will be potentially on that ballot. And then do we hold on this with, obviously, I'd need to get permission from county and state, and I don't know, I mean, maybe they say, no, do both, you're out of compliance, you need to get this uh. So, what's the process to change existing boundaries? Was what they did, and if you, they just on.
We'll have to vote to change existing.
Oh, no.
We can decide that.
Yeah. They would, RSP would get the legal uh description of, of those areas, and then you would do that. So, this does not. So, we just have to publish that in paper, and then have the county clerk know that people live in new board districts. Yes. Or different board districts, potentially.
If we got to have a special election, though, to change our voting method, I'm, I would not be in favor of that, because I don't, that's not something I don't, that we don't need to pay, we don't need to use taxpayers' money for a special election for something like that. So, I would be against that. If we could get it on, if we would agree to put it on a, you know, a regular election at some point in the future, then I'd be for it.
When, when's the pre- when's the next primary election?
The next election will be uh.
Next August. Or this, this next August.
Yes, August primary, November general, um, and for uh three of our districts, no, excuse me, four. Yeah.
It'll just be May, Jennifer.
And Sarai, yeah, so.
And Sarai.
So, they'll be in, uh, you know, people have to file by June. Guys did that correctly, or wrong? Twenty twenty-five.
June first.
Yeah, twenty twenty-five. If there's three or more, there would be uh election in August. If there's two or less, not, because then in November, so November of twenty twenty-five, because new board members or incumbents, whoever is selected, would come on January of twenty twenty-six. So, I haven't heard of being any other elections, you know, sales tax or anything like that, so. Well, I think we ought to correct existing boundaries to where they're more equitable.
Absolutely.
And get that done. I think looking at a map that would, you know, have three districts where an entire district's not voting in the general, or every district that we have, I think that would, you know, we could probably put that together at the same time and just, you know, wait until it doesn't affect the school board election. You know, from a standpoint of just making it confusing for the voters.
Right.
You know, maybe do it in a, a primary on and off year.
Right, there's gonna, yeah, in two years from now, in the next, two years from last November, there'll be another election, or we could put it on or that.
And if you want to see what happened, I mean, so page five, nine, and twelve, I would, I probably ripped the staple off yours, because page five is what we currently are. And then page nine would be what happens to the districts in scenario one, and page twelve is what happens to the scenarios or the districts in scenario two. So, it's probably these is almost if you superimpose them, uh, but you can see what happens, because I ultimately would need the board's uh wishes on like, all right, with the county and legal law in scenario one or scenario two. They, but they both work, they both give us plus or minus and five percent of the mean, but you know. Or you want RSP to come down and with their computer, why, maybe you say, oh, let's take a little bit of Lanny's and see what that does, uh.
So, scenario two is the most accurate, correct?
Yes.
I mean, I don't, I guess I just don't know why we wouldn't do that one.
Well, I, I can tell you that if, if we go with scenario two, I'll probably be out of my district in the next two years.
Oh, okay.
Because I'll be in Lanny's district.
Gotcha.
Yeah. No, because I'm, we're thinking about.
Oh, never mind. I didn't know that. I was like, your house is still there. Okay.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, with the you know, census data, and it's all computerized.
Yeah.
And they can run a boundary right down the road, right through the middle of somebody's property, whatever they want. I mean, it's, it's amazing what they can do. That's ten years ago when I was, I looked at it, fourteen years ago. Yeah, about twelve years ago, but that uh but I think board members should have some input on it, they know the district better. We don't want to have a district that's heavily weighted, or you know.
We don't want to have a district that's heavily weighted, you know. We want it split between rural and within the city limits of Lewisburg. You know, at some point, it'd be nice if you, everybody to have a little bit of Lewisburg or, you know, you have an area that you represent. And so just make sure that it makes sense.
Well, everybody does except for Rob. He's got me sire.
Everyone, everyone else has some like within the town. Is that what you're talking about? Like within the city? Yeah.
Comes up and gets.
It's, it's hard to do. I don't think you can actually do that, but it's. Yeah.
We need to decide on one of these tonight.
But we don't have to decide.
No, I mean, I need, obviously with the holidays too, uh, I would think, I, I need to, like I said, get with, and of course Janet White's almost, her tenure is almost finished too, but get with her office this week. I just found out about this on Friday afternoon, uh, so this part. I need to know, we need to make a decision very soon on this. And am I hearing this is good information, but we're going to wait.
Well, I mean, could we, we could decide what we want to do with that and then, and, and vote to put it on the next ballot, correct?
So when there is a ballot, then you would just put it on there.
Well, but I think we need to make that decision probably after the next election because if there's new people coming on, I don't think it's right for us to decide that. You know, because there will be an election before that would potentially be voted on.
That's it. Two years from now.
It would be in twenty twenty-six where the board.
So that probably needs to be delayed.
Because elections for the school board are on hot years. So we had an election for twenty twenty-three. Like Pat, for example, started now. It'll be twenty-five, so.
And I can give, give you the pendrup we're thinking about. So it's not very far away. It's just on, it's right there with you guys.
I mean, just question, do we let them know they messed this up?
I did. I, I knew they probably.
Get our money back.
I would, everything else that we need to do is for free, they said.
Oh, okay.
But I thought they, well, I knew they had, I, when I saw Jim on Wednesday, I said the math was not adding up. And then I had started to zoom with them and then all of a sudden they're on their way and I thought they're going to probably tell me what I think I uncovered. But we can, uh, so I'll make sure, uh, visit with, like I said, Janet White's office, even if I have to visit. I assume this is under Scott Schwab, the election office at the state and see if we need to, uh, but probably in January to get this changed. And so, and I don't want you even thinking, when you look at those maps, we just have to stay within that hundred and fifty-six square miles. So you could, you could really change that. I mean, yeah, Rob's really big up kind of east-west, but he went more north-south and Joe Aaron go, I mean, as long as you stay within the mean and, uh, obvious, you would need to make sure you're currently in that district, uh, five of you, uh, except Jennifer. Or change that one too, and she goes back into, uh, District Six, uh, but that would be up to you guys. So I will, uh, get some more information. If you, as you study this, I know it's first that you're seeing it and you would like, I'd like an option three, uh, or four, or you want them to come to the January board meeting and they're live, so they're, you know, moving this, as you say, and you see what it does to district.
Can they do that? Just move lines and show numbers, just act live like we're doing that?
Yeah, it's amazing. And it's true that, no, I think they cite what it is, but it's all census data. And so, yeah, like you take that little, look at all, like Sarai, those little yellow thing, yellow, uh, on the left side there and, uh, up higher, like, if you wanted Lanny to get some of that top left yellow, uh, or Rob comes down and takes some of Lanny's purple, it would, it would just show you what it's doing. So I can visit with them and see. They've actually worked with our district for, for a long time. They, they're demographers. So, I mean, you know, Spring Hill uses them all the time when Spring Hill growing so fast, you know, figures out they need a new elementary and things like that.
I mean, whatever we can do to square up the districts, I think would help people. What I hear is the districts are confusing. I don't know if I'm in the district or not.
I agree, if they are confusing.
Yeah, the only one that has a square district is Joe Aaron. I mean, that orange is, uh, yeah, so you guys would have that opportunity. You would just always have to have the mean in front of you. And because the mean's not going to change, and then just make sure you're close to that mean.
Mine was fairly square.
It was.
I think you, you might be better served to get three board members and yourself and try and put it together and see what people say. It would be a little bit awkward to do it at a meeting.
Okay. Do that, uh, so. Have any volunteers for that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm always available.
I'm not always available. Well, we'll look around, we'll schedule. They'll come up to Walmart. Yeah, so if anyone else does, or I can check with Joe Aaron, uh, she should be showing up here a little bit as well, so. And it looks like the video is going to work and I do want to brag about.
Yeah, we'll score it.
Everyone knows Lewisburg for the Lewisburg sign. We have a very famous sign, Mel just outside of town. When you say Lewisburg, that's the first thing people say. Oh, you're right. You need to turn that to come in and discover Lewisburg. We also have a lot of small blue cheeks in the town and cheeks. We have great feeling parts, people down here that people come from all over the place to visit. The schools are very important to this community and people come to our town for our schools. It's very important to have a good, strong school district. Lewisburg High School is really fun. The people here are great. There's a lot of good activities and we're very encouraged to go out and get involved and with the community, with different clubs. The first year the teammates program came to Lewisburg, I had joined because I thought it was really cool and I wanted to try it. I'm into it, but we have done a lot of things together. I've been a mentor since two thousand and nineteen. I mean, we started meeting when she was in elementary school. And she's now a freshman. So our activities that we do together have changed a little bit. I started in fifth grade and like changed a lot. Have like different phases of liking certain things. Jill do it with me. I really wasn't a chance for a little bit, so I thought I could play chess. We made it together, especially in baking. It's been fun. Our weekly visits, um, that's about three minutes. We go from playing games together to now, we usually just get to talk. She's really involved. Everything is permanent here in town. So we love to hear about Amber's, who did that and we'll check on other friends. Ivy makes our sessions easy because I just let her kind of take the lead on what she wants to do, what she wants to talk about. And that thirty minutes, what did I?
I ended up becoming a mentor through a friend of ours. It was our neighborhood and then I came to an introductory meeting with some of the school districts and it sounded like a very good program. Signed up for it.
Started off with my two older brothers. They've always done it. And my mom now has done it. And so I did it. We've been for almost two and a half or three years.
Garrett and I have a kind of a little different relationship in that I have a grandson the same age as him, Kyle. And so I've known Garrett on sports teams since he was right kindergarten. When we became that way, I think they matched us because we both like sports. So that's a lot of our conversation. We're a new subject through him. He might say he likes lunches and donuts. We get to have them now.
Yeah. Definitely good. Talking to someone that'll whistle you and talk about something you want to talk about. I think it makes me more happy knowing that I have someone that'll whistle me anytime.
My personal experience with teammates started about six years ago and we had the chance to go to Lawrence and listen to Dr. Osborne talk to us about teammates in general. I volunteered. I went through the training program, filled out an interest survey. And through that interest survey, they connected me with Dave. And I remember our first time we met, we had an interest survey of different things he was interested in and different things that I was interested in, and it didn't really match. And I thought, okay, maybe they made the wrong connection, the wrong combination with the two of us. But the more we talked and the more we got to know each other, it's been really a great fit. I learned just as much from Dave as hopefully he learns from me. I've told people, I think, at first, do you want to become a teammate? You have to find the time to carve out every week to be with your mentee. Now that my mentee is a little bit older, I think he's now carving out time to be with me. And I think that's pretty special. Dave knows that there's somebody else out there who's going to support him, who's going to listen to him and be an advocate for him as he grows up.
Being a retired educator, I know a lot of these kids, but I'm such a, just a skin on the top of it. With Bella, I've been able to get down deeper and understand and try to help her through some types of ways and the I haven't been most comfortable here in the, you know, friendships or something like that. It's just rewarding for the mentor to think I did make a little difference, I believe. I probably will become a teammate mentor. Because it is me a lot and it's very fun. Whenever there's like big drama or like, I'm really upset about a class. It's nice to just go and rant about it. It's the same space and like, she's not going to repeat it to anyone. She's helpful about it. She's like kind, listens and maybe tries to give advice to help anybody reach for potential. And that's what I, what I need to learn.
My hope for Dave is that he's a successful man, a successful adult, that he has the confidence to go out there and conquer the world, the confidence to be anything he wants to be. And that I provide maybe a little bit of support along the way. If he needs a contact number or if he needs a contact email that I can provide that for him. Or if you're standing on the road, he just contacts me and says, hey, can I talk to you, Dave?
My hope is that mentees, no matter where they end up, feel the importance, remember the importance and want to be a part of teammates or a mentor in some way. It doesn't have to be right here in Lewisburg. If wherever they land, there's opportunities out there for them to be a mentor and a role model for the younger generation.
Before teammates, I think we had community members that were looking for a way to give back. And teammates was able to fill that void in a very, very positive manner. I would say for any school district that's thinking about teammates, come to Lewisburg, go over to the table and see what it's all about because our kids are better off because of teammates.
Glad you got to see that tonight. That's a great spotlight of our district and it is a wonderful program. It's really cool.
Okay, uh, four point three. Baseball and softball field discussions.
Uh, just want to give you an update of where we're at. They don't have anything to provide you except, uh, just some, um, steps I've, I've been taking. So we've had ongoing discussions, um, with Hollis and Miller, our architects, M K E C, our civil engineers, and then Smith and Boucher, our mechanical engineers. Uh, they'll be surveying the areas soon. As directed by you, they'll be working on an RFP, uh, that we can send out as a hard bid. Probably around, uh, and you'll see that before we send it out. So I don't have that yet, but if I can't get that by January, definitely the February, uh, one, but when that goes out. If this project does come to fruition, I would like to see, you know, that hopefully we could play on them and it'd be like March, April, May of twenty twenty-six. Obviously, we can't do anything this year. Trying to be as creative as possible to get the most bang for the buck. So in that location by the middle school, if we're able to, uh, use our existing parking lots, both the middle school parking lot and the staff parking lot at the high school. We're able to use our existing concession stands and restrooms in the middle school. All those things in today's dollars cost not hundreds of thousands of dollars, unfortunately, six, seven figures, uh, sometimes. So we have great parking lots, uh, so if we can utilize some of the, the items that we currently have, that'll save us. Not go out and hard bid everything. The RFP or kind of my thoughts would be use government and contract direct pricing when we can. There, we're going to have to hard bid and hire a G C to, to do some of the things. But for example, um, bleachers, and we're going to talk about bleachers here in a little bit, uh, Heartland seating, we can go direct. We don't have to have a middleman in there that's going to, I mean, how those work, if you're buying leakers for thirty thousand and then you have a G C, those cost you thirty-nine thousand dollars, you know? And so we, we'll need a G C to pour the concrete, but I can have Heartland come in and just put those right down, just like we're going to talk about in the gym and the soccer field here in a little bit. Scoreboards. So Athco or all of our scoreboards are inside and outside. I'll have to have a G C to make sure the conduit's there, but then Athco directly can go and set those scoreboards. Lighting. So our current outdoor lighting is with Musco, no different. We'll have to have a G C run the conduit, make sure the electrical's there. Musco come in and set the lights and voila. And also in, in the playing surface, there are, uh, contracts for, for that as well. Uh, so, so that would be my goal is kind of what you'll see before it goes out, uh, the most, uh, you know, savings I think we can give with that and still provide our, our kids. And just not baseball and softball, but done right. Band can be out there, uh, P E at both high school and middle school, soccer, um, you know, all sports can, can be out there. And so, uh, just, uh, and then there'll be alternates for the, the two practice fields, um, depending on, on where the dollars and cents, uh, run as well. So, uh, like I said, my goal, uh, definitely nothing's, nor P will go out until you, uh, see it. I just don't know, once again, with the holidays coming up, if I can present that too in January, but might be February and then that would go out. Uh, what I've been told is they can do a lot of this in the wintertime, which if we allow that, uh, should leverage some better pricing as well. Uh, they're busy in the summer, so if we're not going to say come and do that this upcoming summer, but come in in October or November of next year, uh, that could help us as well. So which, we can do that. We just fence that area off and, uh, I could go to work as, get ready. So stay tuned, but I don't know if anyone had any other questions on that.
All right. Four point four course proposals.
Hey, we have a few. They're just discussion items and then you can, uh, listen to the principals as they present these, mull over them, and then they'll be back in January for approval. So these can go into the student, um, enrollment books as they, uh, start enrolling for next year. Uh, so Ms. Hankins is going to come up. The first is really not a course proposal, but I thought it would just be fitting to, the board here about her idea about this. So it's, uh, that one, middle school scholars bowl. So, um, Mrs. Hankins, if you want to share your thoughts on starting a middle school scholars bowl program.
Hi, um, thanks for having me. So, um, I think Ty and I, one of the biggest pushes that we've had for middle school since we both came on board is that we both wanted to get more kids involved. And not every kid is an athlete. And I know that we, you have allowed us to have sixth grade cross country and we really appreciate that. We had, um, just over thirty runners. It was a great season and we appreciate that. Uh, and so when we are at the frontier league meetings where you hear about, um, different events that they have going on and scholar bowl came up and a couple of the frontier league schools have scholar's bowl. And I know the high school has it as well. Uh, and we thought that would be a great idea to get, um, kids that are interested in the science and in math areas, um, something more to be involved in. And I think a lot of the frontier league schools kind of do sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, but there's no rhyme or reason in why they only do that. And my push is for sixth grade also to be involved. And typically, I don't know that it's a large amount of kids that necessarily want to have this, but it's definitely something like, you know, two, three, four teams, which then turns into about, you know, sixteen, twenty kids. To be, to be involved, it happens in the spring and we're asking, uh, we, we did propose a course, but it is a club and it will be, um, we'll start to promote it if you allow us to do that in, in the fall. And then we have asked somebody who, a credible sponsor, who we feel, Ms. McCubrey, and she, um, has shown some excitement and interest in it and said that, uh, you know, if it's something that the board decides and passes, that she would be willing to, to sponsor that. I've also talked to a couple of the parents on site council that would also be willing to, um, go in. You have to have a, um, a sponsor or some, an adult present for every team. And I've talked to a couple of those parents and I'm sure our, our parents are still involved that they would be willing to, to take us to the other frontier league schools, uh, that have these competitions. So, I don't know if you want me to, to read this here, but that's just kind of our, our excitement behind it. And it's just one more opportunity for sixth grade, um, seventh grade, and eighth grade to get involved in our, our building.
Is scholar bowl, is that, is that fall notification?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know at the middle school level. Like they can win state scholars bowl. Uh, and at the high school level, Brian Meyer is doing a great job. Uh, Ty, uh, his numbers are up and so we've been having to take several teams. Erin, his wife, has been going as well. So I was just curious because I hadn't had that request the last few years. So Ty got me the last five years and, uh, we're like, uh, so we've been hovering at the high school scholar bowl team about, say, fifteen, thirteen to sixteen. And uh, we're like, uh, so we've been hovering at the high school scholars bowl team about, say, fifteen, thirteen to sixteen this year. We're uh for the first, in five years, we're like in the lower twenties, and so that's even higher, uh, which is great. I know you guys want our our kids to be out for activities. Heck, we have sixty kids out for wrestling this year. I mean, it's so, it's really cool. Uh, this though, I mean, if, and if you're not approving it tonight, but if you would approve this in January, then this would go to negotiations because we would add a supplemental. Um, and Wendy has potentially asked, but obviously we'd open that up. If Wendy, it would be who Megan and Ty would like and, or she's the only one, great, but she's definitely not just penciled in there. I mean, we'd have to open that up, but she has showed interest, which we appreciate. She's a seventh grade science teacher. And uh, but yeah, it would become a supplemental, uh, and there would be some cost, obviously, that one. And personnel, supplemental, transportation cost, um, a little bit, you know, with the buzzer system, uh, to have that as well. But uh, but it'd give me time to plan that, the fiscal tag uh of that as well. You know, we mentioned uh cross country and now that we finished, uh, I believe that was a great thing to add to the middle school. We did receive a lot of pushback from the the Frontier League middle school, and they did not really. So we had to go and not go to a lot of middle school Frontier League. It's not a sanctioned uh middle school Frontier League sport. Uh, so uh, we, our kids did run, but they went to non-Frontier League schools.
It just so happened that they were in the schedule that way. Uh, we had, they had, we had four meets. Correct, so I think we had four meets and um, and when we, I went to the uh Frontier League principal meeting, there's more talk about it, I think, because they they saw so many of our kids um running. So I know there's some of them were talking about adding it.
Yeah, we did, so, but I just thought you guys know, it was successful, but we had to go to sort of like Prairie View and some other non-league schools because we were told, Lewisburg, if you wanna do it, that's great, but it's not a middle school Frontier League sport.
Are there very many middle schools in the Frontier League that have Scholar Bowl?
Oh, I think there's four or five. So um.
You're not gonna blaze a trail like you did with the, with cross country.
That's great.
Alright, thanks.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Alright, Dr. Van Rain has a couple at the high school level. Uh, one uh on math and then another a couple on career technical. Looks like a career technical. Nope, that's the math one, so math is up first.
So um, we're looking at maybe some of our um, track per se to get started in math at the high school. And what we are finding is we're putting um large amounts of kids into pre-algebra classes. And so um, when they do that, their next available class would be algebra as sophomores. And we're testing, um, state testing our sophomores and with lots of geometry. And so we're, our kids that start in pre-algebra are actually not gonna be, we're just setting them up for failure for that. So what we'd like to do is start all of our kids um in algebra, and we have labs already created for kids that need support, so we will keep our algebra labs. Those kids will go from algebra to geometry. We have geometry labs for kids that need extra support. And then the class that's here is an applied math reclass, which will take concepts of algebra and geometry, put them in some real world uh purpose classes. And so um, this is for the kids that aren't gonna be um tracking for college algebra, statistics, calculus. Um, so it gives them that third math credit, but um it just kind of aligns everybody and helps all of the kids be ready for state testing. So um, I think it's with the, the way that math was done in the past and, you know, I've tried to go back and forth. So when we saw some kids struggling with pre-algebra, before my time, that was a class that was created for that. But we kind of set our kids up for not doing well in that state test. So that with the emphasis on testing, it just, it doesn't seem fair for us to not have algebra first, but it just needs, means we need that third class for kids um to provide um a place for them. So um, it's something that we will be writing our own curriculum for, and I have a teacher that's excited about that. So it'll be, um, I think something that kids, will be a a section of kids will really hear about.
And then your career technical ones?
So um, Dave and I went to um a C T E conference in, just looking at the pathways. Most of the pathways that we offered in a, in a last um step of the pathway, the kids can do um on, basically like on the job training. And so we wanted to offer that for some of those students. Um, I think we have a lot of those kids already doing that, so they they might be in an ag pathway and then they're, they're working on the farms, they're working for companies that are doing things like that after school on the weekends. So actually, they can do that, get credit, they can leave up for ninety minutes a day um to do those courses. So we would like to add that um as something they can actually pick as a course. Um, working with the C T E teachers, they would like for that in the spring to um take the place of their um early release. So they would actually, they would get credit, but they would be doing the job application, um, actually doing the job for that, as opposed to just getting free time off. So just keep, keep connecting the kids to um what they're studying. So um, there are kids though that need that job um placement, but they're not in the pathway, so there's a second class on there. So it's work experience. Um, we've experimented with that, where there is a course code for that. We've had students do that the last two years. Um, and so I feel like we've kind of slow stepped that and done a little practice with it, just um working with some special situations. But I think it's a class that would be great for that as well, so we'd like to decide to, of course.
So just say like, you have a senior that's doing early release or something like that. Is this something that they could take and get credit then?
Correct.
I feel like there was something like that when I was in high school called work-study. And like, it wasn't early release, they just, they really went to work and they got some credit for it.
Right.
They left school, so. I don't know if anybody else has that.
Yeah, I mean.
High school year.
If we're gonna let kids out, you know, I mean, I prefer they were learning something, not just going home and going to sleep.
Yes.
Or sleeping in early and coming in late, it'd be, I think we are an educational institution, it'd be great if we can. I like this.
Yep, me too. Thank you.
So you'll look at that. If you have any questions, let me know, or like it goes with Megan or Amy about, and you'll approve those in January. So they can start enrolling kiddos as well, so.
Um, action items. Five point one, approval of capital outlay purchases.
Yeah, I have several tonight and they were, have been on the capital outlay of uh budget and uh, outlay purchases that I've shared with you before. Um, we really have three still outstanding um that, big ticket items, not presented to you tonight. Still working on bus, uh, and then obviously technology purchases. And then soon I'll be uh some getting out an R F P or uh the asphalt filling and uh crack filling and sealing of the parking lot. So those are kind of the three. Those are all budgeted as well, but those aren't in front of you tonight. Uh, the first is um bleachers. You have two there from Heartland Seating. One would be for the home side of the high school, and then uh I was asked to look at some soccer ones. On the soccer one, which if you go down to the next page, there were several options. Um, the only difference is, as you can see in parentheses, the eight inch rise versus fourteen. So, you know, steps are rise versus run, and so I had Brad Peterson come out and and look at it. Um, we do think uh the location of where we're looking at, the eight inch rise is fine. There's, so if you've been to a soccer game, uh, there's a sidewalk, the bleachers are there. You go past the, the shed, uh, the announcer station, the the sidewalk continues, and that's kind of where our visitors are. And then where the sidewalk ends, uh, there is grass there, and so we will put a concrete pad there, and then that'll be the visitor section. So um, with signage, we already have signage. Um, we don't need to do the A D A, as you see there, because we have plenty of A D A uh behind all of those bleachers as well. So recommendation for the soccer would be that twenty four thousand five sixty five. Uh, working with uh several concrete, concrete providers on a concrete pad. The pad there is roughly twenty five by twenty eight B, five inches thick. Um, I was talking to Scott Apple today, uh, who's with Phoenix Concrete and some others. So uh, I think that pad will be roughly about ten thousand dollars. Uh, but um, if we can get that in in the wintertime and they can pour concrete, uh, depending on the weather in the con, in the winter, then we could get those bleachers potentially uh installed even before girls soccer. Uh, but we'll have to see. Uh, and then they'll go back up. The first one uh would be the home bleachers at the high school. Um, so um, large uh ticket item. Uh, those bleachers are twenty-two years old, used all the time. Um, so this would be for the home side. This would be for backs for all of them, uh, that they would automatically pop out when the bleachers are deployed. And as they go back in, would be uh, would fold under, it would provide new uh railings uh for the aisles. And also, they would change out the railings on the aisles on the visitor's side as well in this price. Um, and then obviously, as it shows there, to dispose of the existing West Bank, um, and the dumpsters as well. The, the motors are the same, so we will try to take as much from these bleachers as we can. So when we have one of the other three sets or even this one, out of warranty someday break down, we can have some of that equipment and not have to go buy it uh as well. You can see kind of the urgency of why it needs to be denied is in that next box right under eighty-eight hundred dollars. Uh, even tonight, uh, this would be based on delivery from June to September. So June is fine, September's not, uh, because we're playing volleyball in September. So uh, uh, things take a long time to get in, but um.
So it's backrest for the, I'm just trying to read.
Backrest for the entire, so even, so right now.
One through eleven, center three sections.
Yeah, it can't be on that, the back, back row, because you have kind of that metal.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so it'd be the other eleven rows off the bottom, and all the way to the wings.
All the side.
Yeah.
It's the entire side.
Entire thing, yeah. Well, then also you can have the top because there'd be nothing for that one to fold.
Right.
Sure.
So row eleven's gonna fold under that top one that you're talking about.
I can just line up against the.
Yeah, that fencing or whatever that is, so. Uh, it'll say L H S, it'll be purple. Um, it's the same purple that was put in twenty-two years ago. That's twenty-two years of lights on that, so I don't know if it'll exactly match, but uh, it is still.
Close enough to the visitor's side, you won't be able to see from one of the others, surely.
So, I know uh uh the custodian crew, um, who work hard. I mean, they will, I mean, they're, they're really excited about this potential. Um, we just have really struggled in many ways from uh staffing, uh, things breaking. Um, and as we know, those bleachers come out a lot. Uh, the ones that don't come out a lot are behind those. If you went to Friday night's basketball game, uh, and now that wrestling's not behind there, that is a lot easier to push those out. Uh, but every home game will at least put out both bottoms and the visitors' top, kind of where the band is. And then for our big games, homecoming, Spring Hill and Pale, we will pull out all four of them. I've been talking to Ty about that. Of course, our big wrestling meets, that'll be coming up. Uh, we use the top ones uh as well, so. A gym's used a lot, uh, and that's great, but they get wore out after a while. I know it's a large item. I guess I'll just go through them all and then you can make whatever motions you would like. Uh, the next one is uh for uh flooring at Rockville. So original flooring at Rockville. This is the hard surfaces. So currently, uh, in Janil's building, that is what's called V C T tile. V C T tile uh is the cheapest tile to put in and the most expensive to maintain. It's the tile that, you know, it's the squares, it's very shiny because we, every summer strip it and then wax it. Um, but um, it's just really, in the long run, a lot more expensive. So we've been, as our floors have been, need to be replaced, have been going with L B T, luxury vinyl tile. Uh, even a lot of people put L B T in their homes, uh, the laminate woods stuff. And so L B T, you don't strip and wax, you just run the, I call it the Zamboni machine over it. Uh, so it's a lot less labor intensive, it's a lot stronger. Uh, V C T can be brittle, so if there's a crack in the concrete, something under there, it's gonna crack. L B T is a lot uh more sturdy, and so um, this would be for, at Rockville, this would be mostly in all the hallways is mainly where this would be. Um, and the pods are carpet and then um epoxy. But this would mostly be the hallways, some of the, like, the uh staff lounge and some of those areas.
Cafeteria.
Now, the cafeteria is epoxy.
Is it?
Yeah.
Where the big crease is, uh, where's that? It's.
And those.
It's not a hallway.
That, and we're fixing though, that's in the pods, that's epoxy, and they're coming in, they, uh, that group did that. Uh, school, you know, was built oh-six to oh-eight, uh, from a lake, they're gonna fix those cracks over Christmas break in the pods. Where they're at, they're on expansion joints, now they probably, um, maybe it's not expanded anymore after four, sixteen years, but uh, that's what's caused those cracks in the pods is, because when they pulled the carpet up, you could see that expansion joint, and then obviously it hit there. Yeah, it's mainly the nurses' station, uh, the teachers' lounge, and then most of the hallways. We've had really good luck with L B T, uh, so we have L B T uh at all the other buildings. Uh, this hallway uh is L B T as well. Did visit with Janil and she visited her staff because um, we, we have differences. So at, at the high school and Rockville, their hallways or corridors are hard surface. At Broadmoor and the middle school, their hallways are carpet. This building, the hallway down there, preschool is hard surface as well. I think a little bit of that is, so the two buildings that have hard surface are our two newest buildings. They have the most natural light, uh, and so our older buildings, carpet, I don't know, I mean, I, but it is, just so you guys know. And Janil did visit with her staff and they wanna go back with, uh, they obviously have carpet in their classrooms and their pods, but it would be a hard surface uh going down the main corridors like it is now.
What is the, the janitorial staff, do they prefer the hard surfaces or, yeah?
Yeah.
I would imagine.
And even this L B T is just similar, looks like in this room. We no longer do even carpet broadloom. I mean, that's all carpet square, so if we can't get a stain up, we just take up a, a square. Uh, because as you know, there's a few stains in our world, uh, and uh, so I, yeah, I think the, and maybe that was part of it. She probably talked to Tucker and Brandon and they probably quickly told her they would rather have the hard surfaces as well, so. Yes, alright.
Uh, well, quick question. Are you putting up the bid? Uh, just concerned about the dishware, about the moisture content. Um, is there a way to test that prior or, just because you're looking at almost five dollars or four and a half, or square foot to mitigate moisture, right?
Yeah, so uh, Commercial Floor Works, we've used them a long time, and I know Pat's works with Brett and the group, so they are a great company. Uh, where Brett Brandon, uh, he got, he put that on there, and I'm glad you brought that up. Um, the high school, we had moisture issues, and so at the high school, we actually, in the main corridor in the high school, so the commons and down what we call Main Street, that is a new product called Nora Rubber, which Nora Rubber, it is amazing if the floor is flat, has, you know, no need for mitigation or anything like that. Well, that high school had moisture in it, and uh, so we've had a lot of ongoing issues with that. Nora Rubber and the glue sticking, uh, we've had warranty issues. And so actually, the academic side, uh, Commercial Floor Works came in and, and kind of put us, I'll call it a skim code in, and to keep that moisture barrier down. So what uh Brett will do, they, he hires a company out of the city somewhere. They come and they drill holes and they test the moisture content. The biggest thing for that is, I know moisture kind of scares us, but it's mainly will, does it have enough moisture in the floor where it'll avoid the warranty of the glue? And L B T has a different warranty factor for glue than El, than the, the Nora Rubber. And so like at the high school, uh, we planned on doing all Nora Rubber in the science rooms. And I don't know if you got, like, if you ever go downstairs by the oxygen, that was supposed to be that Nora Rubber. But because of that moisture, we changed that. So the science rooms and, so next time you go to a high school basketball game or wrestling, if you go downstairs, you'll see that's L B T down going into oxygen upstairs by the concession stand is Nora Rubber. And we did that because L B T, uh, that glue, and I've learned more about glue than I ever thought I would, but it can withstand a much higher moisture level. So I mentioned that because I would be more scared if we were putting in Nora Rubber at uh Rockville. But um, since we're going with L B T, it goes up to a very high moisture level. But I will have uh Brett and Commercial Floor Works come in and poke some holes. We'll just have these holes in the floor, and I mean, they're, they're not trip hazards, they, they plug them, but you can't see them in the tile until this summer. And make sure we're okay with that. And that would probably be good before I bring these other three uh purchases to you, because yes, that's fifty-three thousand, but you know, a bus is gonna be potentially up to two hundred thousand, technology's a hundred and fifty. We've add, we've allocated a hundred thousand to do the, the parking lots. And so before I bring those, but yeah, probably be good that we knew if we got to spend fifty. And so before I bring those, but yeah, probably be good that we knew if we got to spend fifty three thousand seven seventy five, so. That's probably more than anyone wanna know, but I appreciate you bringing that, that up.
It's a lot.
Yeah. And then the last is uh com- uh com- uh controls. So CSC, Control Service Company is who we uh use to control everything. When Jenny and I came in here tonight, uh we thought this room was a little cold. Uh and so all I had to do is text Doug and he turned up the temperature in here. Uh if he gave me controls, I'd do that, but I don't know how to do it. So it's just not uh heating, it's just not HVAC. Yes, we could look in this room and we could tell you how many times the air is turning over. And that was important during COVID, some people would ask like, how many times an hour is fresh air? You know, you hear that on airplanes and things like that. We can tell you how many times this room is turning over with fresh air. We, not only just the temperature, the uh carbon dioxide, uh the humidity. Um so it does all that. Uh if you went into any of our mechanical, uh so our custodial closets, uh they have the entire blueprint of the school and we want it all green. Sometimes there's uh a yellow, that means maybe, you know, the humidity's creeping up a little bit. So then it's bringing in more fresh air or something like that. If they're gonna be red, then we ha- we have some issue in there. Custodians uh and our Control Services is looking at that all the time, we use Design Mechanical. They're able to take a look at that as well. But it also monitors everything else, our hot water heaters, our, our exhaust fans. Uh and that's what a lot of this is on here, we're adding, you know, so exhaust fans are original on the nineteen ninety two middle school. So that's project two. Uh so uh and Mike Cyferling's been very involved. We're replacing a rooftop unit over the wake room there, so as you go into the gym, that unit right there. Uh so that needs new controls. So project two is at the middle school, it's mainly that, uh to control the exhaust fans, uh which is important. Obviously, if we have too much CO2 or humidity, uh or in the kitchen or other places, the, the locker rooms. Our locker rooms aren't as big adult middle school, but definitely, uh if you want a great smell, you should go into the high school uh boys' locker room. At times of the year, that is uh, we need great exhaust fans in there. And then Rockville Elementary, I even know one of your buildings, it's uh we're replacing uh the RTU to rooftop unit. Uh and uh then uh some water, domestic water heaters, so it's all original. And uh those need new controls as well, so. I know that's a big price tag, but I do believe uh if we're monitoring, uh no different than your car uh or other things that have a lot of technology, uh we're trying to make sure that our systems continue to run or catch them before they completely uh fail and it costs us a lot more money. And especially with controls, when we have staff and students, we need to make sure the air quality and everything is conditioned appropriately. Another major savings, and I credit Mike Clevenger to start, has started all this, he's now over at Pleasant Hill. But, and I think I've shared this with you, we, like, tomorrow morning, our buildings don't all come to live at the same time. They all stage and that's very important. And no different than your house, if you think you're gonna turn your thermostat down and then whoever you or your spouse crawls out of bed tomorrow morning, you turn that way up, you're actually not saving yourself any money. Because our friends at Evergy are gonna hit you with a de- demand charge and it's no different in schools. So how are schools, we don't, you know, Broadmoor, eighty six thousand square feet, we don't, all of a sudden at seven o'clock tomorrow morning, let's say, let's warm that baby up. No, we stage it. So first people at Broadmoor are the cooks. So we get the kitchen going and the office, actually, and then the gym, the commons. The last thing actually to start getting conditioned are our classrooms, because our teachers are showing up, you know, seven fifteen or seven thirty for eight o'clock. Our cooks, our custodians, our office staff are getting there a lot earlier, so that, we avoid those demand charges. So Evergy probably doesn't appreciate it, but that's what we try to do.
Typically residential doesn't have a demand charge.
So you do whatever you want to have to pull then. Bad example, at your business, uh.
What you said makes sense.
Okay, thanks, so. But uh so those are those and then there, there's three different recommended motions under those capital outlay purchases.
Are we gonna do the motion for the Rockville floors, are we gonna wait until they do the moisture? Or is that, I was, I guess I kind of didn't understand where we left that with that conversation answer I were just saying.
I personally, I mean, I am fine because I know we have the dollars versus one of the. I will have the answer to that before you would approve the bus, the, the parking lots and some of the technology.
So it would, it might affect something else down.
Yeah, but the, if, even if we had to add that fiscal tag, the dollars are budgeted in the capital outlay to do that. And come January first, uh if money gets tied in capital outlay is when we can start um looking at July first uh purchase orders uh next year's budget. We can't right now do that, you can only do that after, and I don't necessarily like to get into that habit. But that is a way uh that you can start, you know, at least securing a bus. Some of these buses, even though if we purchase them now, uh they're being told we won't get them till twenty twenty six, um depending on uh which ones. Right now, we're looking at, uh we always gotta keep up on our, our route buses, but uh if our activity buses, uh so the two flat noses. Uh there's, there are two of our older buses in the fleets and uh in fact, they're original only. So they're creeping up on, ten years isn't that old, but you know, when we're two years out, uh and they do get a lot of miles on them. So uh looking at that. And we are uh now, um every bus we get uh is getting air conditioning. Ms Conrad, he has to obviously work that out with her drivers until we get all air conditioner buses, who gets those? But uh yeah, I think it's important, uh and somebody who live on gravel roads or we all drive down them. If we can keep our buses, all the windows up, uh and air conditioners on, um buses will be a lot cleaner, they won't be as hot. Uh when I drove the buses this year, I mean, it's just a normal bus, but it had air conditioning. Those high school kids, I can't remember, I think it was JV football, I took them to Adora. You would have thought we would have bought them a Corvette, uh and it was just because they had air conditioning, so it was pretty cool. Uh so anyway. Anyone else has any questions?
Did you have any questions, Joe or anyone?
Yeah.
Okay. Make sure.
Party.
You're party.
Way to point it out, thank you.
No one saw.
Real life happens.
Do we have any motions?
We need a free piece there, right?
Yeah, sure, if you're so inclined.
I move to approve the purchase of the new home LHS gym bleachers for two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and six hundred fifty. Two hundred and six thousand one hundred and fifty visitor soccer bleachers for twenty four five fifty five Hartland seating. We do all three at the same time, just one, one at a time, okay. Anyone else can do the next one?
Been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of new home LHS gym bleachers for two hundred and six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and visitor soccer bleachers for twenty four thousand five hundred and sixty five dollars to Hartland seating. Is there any further discussion?
But.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Boz.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Studiville.
Yes.
And Tisdale.
Yeah.
Goodman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. We have a motion on the flooring.
I move to approve the replacement of flooring at Rockville Elementary for one hundred and eighteen thousand fifty eight dollars and fifty cents to Commercial Floor Works.
Okay, second.
I second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the replacement of flooring at Rockville Elementary for one one hundred and eighteen thousand fifty eight dollars and fifty cents to Commercial Floor Works. There any further discussion?
But.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Boz.
Yeah.
Smith.
Yes.
Studiville.
Yes.
And Tisdale.
Yeah.
Goodman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
And the final one on the control systems. I'll go ahead and cover this. I move to approve the installation, the installation and upgrades of new automatic, automated logic controls for fifty one thousand two hundred and sixty nine dollars to Control Service Company. It's been moved and seconded to approve the installation and upgrades of new automated logic controls for fifty one thousand two hundred and sixty nine dollars to Control Service Company. Is there any further discussion?
But.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Boz.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Studiville.
Yes.
And Tisdale.
Yeah.
Goodman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, five point two approval of the twenty five, twenty six school calendar.
All right, uh each year we try our goal to bring the twenty, or the next year uh calendar to the board to approve. So we can get them out to parents and Destination Fund Travel is always one of it and everyone else. So usually I'll send it to Jenny O'Brien and Megan Hill uh as soon as you guys approve it. Uh uh but uh Jennifer and Sarai sat on this committee, has board member reps, uh and we've had several meetings. Uh I showed it last month, uh really, the only big difference is uh what I showed you last time. We, on, in February there, February twenty twenty six, uh we, just like this February of twenty twenty five, parent teacher conferences, when you saw this last month was on February fourth. Whatever first mu- Wednesday this year in twenty twenty five it will be on. Uh the committee, as they met with teachers, uh would like to move that uh to the thirteenth. So we already have President's Day off and so what you saw last time was on February fourth. It's now, parent teacher conferences will be from eight to four, uh so no evening ones. We do evenings in October, we do, don't do evening uh parent teacher conferences in February, uh will be February thirteenth. Um there was a little discussion on uh, you know, having all of Thanksgiving off. Um some of the districts to the north do that. Um but then if you take February or November twenty fourth and twenty fifth off, we have to go get those days somewhere. And um our teachers really wanna be out before Memorial Day, so they are. They're out Friday, May twenty second, Memorial Day is early in twenty twenty six to twenty fifth. We're already starting early in August, um it's usually, there's usually not a really good temperature in the room to take any time away from winter break and it'd be really tough in this calendar because I think anyone wanna go on the twenty second and twenty third. Sometimes if Christmas is like on the weekend, there's a few more days there, but you can see it's really, would be difficult to do it in that one. So I don't know, Jennifer, Sarai, you had any other things?
No, I thought it was so, it worked real smooth. Sure, the teachers went back and they did surveys and they came up with all their, all their information, uh the, the representatives of the committee. It was good.
Yeah, and I don't honestly know why Thanksgiving, uh you know, these, some districts, uh all my kids go to K-State. K-State's starting to do that, which I think is really silly at the college level because finals are so early. And so it's like they're home and they're gone a week and they're home. Now, KU doesn't do that, KU does more like a fall break. Uh but Spring Hill Blue Valley, a lot of the Johnson County schools had all Thanksgiving off. Uh I understand for travel and my family's six hours away, so no, I definitely understand traveling. But uh it just seems like, you know, before long we're out for Christmas break again. But that, just so everyone knows, that's becoming a bigger trend, so and it is discussed every year at the calendar committee. If we go all week off for Thanksgiving.
I have a motion. I make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six school calendar as presented. It's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty five, twenty six school district calendar as presented. Is there any further discussion?
But.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Boz.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Studiville.
Yes.
And Tisdale.
Yeah.
Goodman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, five point three approval of moving special assessment funds to capital outlay.
Okay, uh this one um is because of the oh six bond of uh Rockville Elementary. So when Rockville Elementary was built and you guys were all here and rela- I mean, remember that was just a field and that was purchased. And so no different than a new subdivision, uh the city assessed the school district. And then the ci- the school district obviously had to assess taxpayers for a special assessments. And if you lived in a new subdivision, you know what that means. So we had to put in sidewalks, we had to put in sewers, streets, all of those that required a special assessment. That bond has been paid off, uh obviously we know that and then we went with our new bond. Um and so there's been in fund sixty seven, so we have our audit and you have our cash balances every year that I present. Uh there's a little bit of money in the special assessment fund. Um if the district was going, kind of like some districts that are passing uh bond after bond and, and needing special assessments because they're building new schools and subdivisions, you would use that money for that. Our last bond, our current bond, we didn't have any special assessments and I think, and we talked, there's no uh bond on the horizon that we know are here. And so we can't touch that money unless the motion uh that's presented in front of you tonight. Uh so we currently have ten thousand eight hundred and twenty six dollars and forty six cents in there. Uh delinquent tax, believe it or not, even though this was passed in oh six, that school's open in oh eight, they're still getting a little bit. I'll read the last six years Katie provided me and the, the delinquent tax for that special assessment. Nineteen and twenty, five hundred and sixty dollars, twenty twenty one, one sixty six, twenty one, twenty two, one seventy eight, twenty two, twenty three, seventy nine, forty seven, twenty three, twenty four, we collected forty one dollars and forty six cents. This year, two dollars and forty six cents, so it's, it's dwindling, uh almost down to nothing. And that is why that second sentence in the motion just authorizes any future delinquent taxes to be transferred. So by transferring the capital outlay funds, uh we can't spend more than what we said we were gonna spend. So uh in capital outlay, what we published, uh so this would just be ten thousand eight twenty six, forty six. Then uh will be budgeted and used for future projects more like into next year as well, so. Uh but this gives us the authority to transfer that, close that special fund sixty seven from the oh six bond that built Rockville.
I move to approve the transfer of the dormant special assessment fund code sixty seven from the two thousand and six bond issued to the capital outlay fund in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and twenty six dollars and forty six cents. I also au- also authorize any future delinquent taxes to this fund to be transferred to the capital outlay fund. I need to read that whole thing, yeah. It's been moved and seconded to approve the transfer of the dormant special assessment fund from the two thousand and six bond issued to the capital outlay fund in the amount of ten thousand eight twenty six, forty six. And also authorize any future delinquent taxes to this fund to be transferred to the capital outlay. Is there any further discussion?
It's just.
Okay, I thought I said, I'm sorry. But.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Boz.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Studiville.
Yes.
And Tisdale.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I move, we take a ten minute recess before we go into executive session. Second.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, take a ten minute recess before we go into executive session, we'll reconvene at eight twenty.
Then Sarai, I'll call you on my, uh yours.
We got a favor.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Sarai, I'll call you on your cell phone when we get to executive session in ten minutes. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
I move that we go back into executive session with the superintendent. Can you read this? Why don't you make the move?
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under common protective privacy and dress up with an identified individual, an open meeting will resume in the boardroom at 10:00 p.m.
Second. I move decided to go back into executive session. Any further discussion? I
Thank you.
We thought about 18 and 20 baths.
All right.
Well, Michael went to the driving range yesterday and came home and said.
Right here.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25. The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Looking up.
We thought about 18 and 20 baths.
All right. Well.
Michael went to the driving range yesterday and came home and said.
Right here. It's right here.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25. The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
The mood is seconded to go back into executive session. Is there any further discussion?
All but in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Looking up.
I move we go back into executive session with the superintendent to discuss an individual employee's performance percent to non-elected personnel exception under coma to protect the privacy interest of an identifiable individual and the open medium will resume in the boardroom at 10:25.
It's their little gift from Jenny so I can take theirs.
We ready? We're on there. I move to extend the current employment contracts of the superintendent, assistant superintendent, building principals, and the directors by another school year.
Second.
Vice principals, please. Are they considered principals?
Yeah. It's been moved and seconded to extend the current employment contracts of the superintendent, assistant superintendent, building principals, and the directors by another school year. Is there any further discussion?
But.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Bows.
Yeah.
Smith.
Yes.
Studville.
Yes.
And Tisdale. Goodman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Yeah, we got a adjournment about that. Announcements, next regular board meeting will be January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. I move to adjourn the December ninth, twenty twenty-four regular Board of Education meeting at ten twenty-eight.
Second.
So moved and seconded to adjourn the Board of Education meeting. Is there any further discussion?
But.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Bows.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Studville.
Yes.
And Tisdale. Goodman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Take care, Brian. We'll see you then.